Most mechanics won't even do a head job on them. And if they do, they pull the engine because there's just no... Me, I'm doing that in my front yard, so.
That's been, it's probably been there for awhile.
Paul's gonna read something.
And the thing is, I don't know why they're going with Volkswagen Beetle's head port.
At least I didn't swear.
It's not on the normal Google Images. Unless you... But the other lead-in was...
Project was approved three years ago.
Final football score, what, 29-10?
Hey, so here's our normal forms that need to be signed by, uh... Okay. So, from the back, and he, uh... Don told me to get this to you, and you went to you. Okay, and then you can just email it, scan it, and email back to me as well.
Okay.
Yep. Yep. So, yeah, so standard practice.
Do we have to save something?
No, I think it's just it requires it every time you connect to it now. Are the wireless still working? I think you just have to, when you, because you're connecting to the guest, you just have to click that you accept terms and conditions. There's no password, but...
But it should come up.
I'm just gonna get here early and give my computer to him. Free Monday, we're here, that's what I had to do too.
That's ridiculous.
Need a quarter, seven, Mike.
Online.
I was gonna grab a paper and get it.
I got a stipend for that, right?
Yeah, you'll get double pay.
So that, CNYs? Oh, yeah, it's 7:01.
Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States. Uh, Board Member Aaron McDonald is excused for today. And I'd like to please start with a moment of silence to recognize Mary Fagan, a retiree of the North Syracuse Central School. Beth Hempkes is also a retiree of the Central School District. Thank you. But before we begin, I'm gonna read a statement that the district has put out to community members and parents with regards to an incident last week. North Syracuse Central School officials have recently been made aware that an offensive image was posted on Google Images and tagged Norse, Cicero North Syracuse High School. The district is actively working with Google and law enforcement to investigate this incident and have it removed. The North Syracuse School District is committed to promoting a safe, inclusive environment that affirms and values the diversity of a student body. In no way does this image represent our mission or core values. We will continue to investigate this incident and work with law enforcement to identify the source of this image. Take violations of our student code of conduct very seriously. Thank you. Uh, tonight, we're gonna, we have one presentation, it is the L.W. Siley Bear Road renovation and the land purchasing. Keegan, thank you. Mr. Keegan and Company, okay.
Yeah, we brought a crew tonight. Oh, I'm sorry, it's the other. This thing right here. Excellent. Good evening, everyone. Yeah, I was just thinking, uh, so, uh, John, Paul Johnston from King &amp; King Architects, Todd Labarre from Watchdog Building Partners, uh, this stranger back here you should all recognize.
Former board member.
Former board member and proud Corvette owner.
Yes. John Chahati.
John Chahati from Fiscal Advisors, and Matt Irwin, who you also all know, Director of Facilities. All right, uh, thank you for giving your time, uh, we wanted to come back and present Bear Road, uh, to you again, both a, uh, a quick, um, history of where we came from. Uh, we, we recognize that, um, though I've gone through the floor plans in detail, not everyone has maybe seen the building, so we have a few photos in here, and so we'll, we'll just move through this, just to sort of catch everyone up. I know there's a few new, newer board members and then community members as well, who may not have remembered where we came from, came from with this, uh, with this project. So, again, the, the building was originally constructed in 58, there's an addition from 65, and then virtually nothing has happened in the building since then. Uh, most of the finishes, et cetera, are original to the building. Um, anyone that walks back in there and, and had been a student from there, it would be very familiar. Um, the current building layout does not facilitate, uh, a controlled or a secure entrance. Uh, the building's age, again, uh, it's all original windows, the roof has been replaced, but, uh, the walls in particular, and, and doors and windows are, uh, mostly original to the building and very, um, efficient from an energy standpoint. Uh, the traffic pattern, uh, as we've all talked about many times, the, uh, the bus and, and parking, uh, or, or bus and cars are intermingled during, uh, drop off and pickup. The, the staff and all do the best they can, but there are often parents who are just sort of, uh, uh, I don't know how to say this positively, but, but there, uh, there are cars that are stopping and, and kids walking between buses, and, and some parents trying to walk kids in, and it's, it's a mess. Um, so, uh, again, another key goal to address in the current project, and then finally, um, the building itself is really set up for a, for a very, uh, sort of 40s, 50s, and 60s, um, sign of, of education, um, which talked a lot about getting away from, uh, and not having everyone in their own isolated room, but a lot more collaboration and a variety of spaces that allow different sized groups and, uh, really education that works best for each individual student. So here's some quick photos that show you what I, I just went through, so again, there's the, uh, main office, so you have to enter the building, cross the hallway, and then, um, make it into the office. Uh, those lovely windows and, and walls, uh, certainly serve their purpose. Uh, again, the, the buses pull up to the curb, but then, uh, there, there are so many parents these days, uh, dropping their kids off, and so they're having to walk through the buses to get to the sidewalk and ultimately into the building. Uh, and then finally, you can see, um, lots of floor patching over the years, um, and a lot of the, uh, casework lockers and et cetera are original to the building. So there's that current floor plan.
Well, the last time that I was actually here with, uh, we had the displeasure explaining to the board why the gap between the allowable... And I think we talked a little bit about, uh, timeline between when a... project gets designed, submitted to the state, and then finally approved, and there were some process, um, back then. That time the board had direct...
So, speaking of the redesign, uh, just two quick slides as a reminder, last time I was here, I did not have, um, the updated site plan, but as I mentioned, um, the, uh, site plan pretty much stayed the same through the project. Again, it, it provides a new bus loop, uh, to one side, uh, a dual-sided entry, um, access from both sides. Again, during the day, uh, anyone approaching, uh, or visiting the building would come in from the, um, main parking lot side. The bus loop would be gated off during the day so that that paved surface could also be a dual-use as a, as a phys ed or playground area. The playground does get reworked to allow for that bus loop. The, uh, courtyard, uh, also gets designed and really turned into, um, outdoor learning spaces and, and again, just free-flowing areas where students can be in a secure area, where teachers could bring classes out for a change of scenery. Um, and, and again, it's really critical here to utilize that courtyard just because of the, uh, how small the site current, the site is, and no ability to expand. And the floor plan that we walked through in great detail last time, um, I'm, I, I won't... all of that again, but again, uh, reduced, specific to the redesign, um, we reduced the additions by about half. We were able to, uh, remove what were the basements, mechanical basements, we got away from some of the other, um, site issues, so we, we all feel that it simplifies the project, and again, is probably something that's gonna be more appealing to contractors. I think is the big, something that we thought about all the way through design, is, is the balance of that versus, uh, um, also meeting all of the district's, um, wants and needs for this building. So again, just some big bullet points, and I think these are the, the items that we felt like we were able to achieve through the redesign, and, uh, I think everyone, including the staff, was, was, uh, generally pleased with, with the outcome. So again, the, uh, the separation of the bus loop and the cars, uh, and secure entry area where it can be a single point of entry through the day, where you're, you're in a secure lobby where you check in, um, long before you have access to the rest of the building. Properly sized kindergarten rooms that are achieved through, uh, onto the building. And again, the, the redesign of, of all spaces to provide those group and those flexible and, and differentiated sized spaces throughout the building. So each grade, as we talked last time, has a variety of group work that allow, um, either other teachers or volunteers to work with smaller groups of students, and to be able to expand out of the classroom to achieve that. Expecting that many kids and adults in, inside the classroom all functioning, sort of talking over each other does not work, so that, those breakout spaces are really critical. Again, the grade levels are organized around the courtyard, um, everyone has access to the courtyard, uh, and, and... Yet another educational space for people to move in and out. Existing toilet rooms remain in each classroom, we've talked about, but at each grade level there will be a handicap accessible toilet room that is, uh, accessible directly from the hallway, so people are not having to walk into someone else's classroom, uh, if they need to use that room. Art, music, and band moved to the front of the building, again, just thinking about noise levels and, uh, just reducing the impact of, of those specialized spaces on, uh, classrooms. Talked about the courtyard, and then, um, a, another key piece is just the, the redesign included all the mechanical systems, the air conditioning, all the energy efficiency goals that the, the project had originally started with. Um, so you'll be able to realize those savings, operational side, for, you know, the, the many years to come after the renovations.
And then considered some of the... Typical project that has renovation that have, uh, construction total.
On this slide, you see a little comparison of, um, starting with the 30.4 million that Todd, uh, just outlined, um, the next amount is the amount originally approved by the voters, the 22.5 million, uh, in October of 2016, and as we said, we, uh, part of that was, uh, for the new Fuel Island, which was completed under budget at about a million, uh, 1 million 80,000 dollars. Um, and so you subtract that out, um, and that shows us our additional 9 million that we need. Fortunately, we have about 2.2 million, uh, in our, uh, fund balance that's available, uh, for appropriation to this project, which leaves about 6.76 million more, uh, that we need, um, uh, that'll have an impact on the taxpayers, uh, for this project. So we're, we're asking, to be clear, and we'll show you the, the draft, um, proposition in a moment, but we're asking the voters to approve 9 million, recognizing that we're gonna use 2.2 million of fund balance, uh, to have a net impact of 6.7 million. I want, I want to just focus in the interest of, of kind of looking at the whole picture. The project's a 30, you can see here the renovation of Bear Road's gonna cost 30.4 million. Our estimated state aid is about 12.4 million, which leaves a local share of about 17.99 million. The voters approved, the, the, in the, in the referendum on the 16th, the lion's share of this project, this is just the additional amount. And right now, it's always an estimate at this time when people say, "What's the impact on our taxes?" And well, right now, we're estimating about 14 cents per thousand of home value, or about $14.38, uh, before STAR, um, and, you know, we, we haven't bid the project yet, so we'll see, uh, if it comes lower than that, and, um, that would be a great thing. So project timing, um, there's been a lot of planning and a lot of preparation for this project, obviously dating back to the fall of, of 2015. We're asking the board tonight to approve, I'm sorry, the, we're gonna ask the board on this, on the 14th, I should, 21st, I should've changed that. We were originally gonna ask the board to approve tonight, uh, the resolution, uh, but we wanted to get that right, uh, especially since we're adding a, a land component to it, so we're gonna come back to you on October 21st, um, with that revised, um, uh, resolution, uh, which will be the, the, uh, the key for a vote, um, on December 17th, uh, the referendum will take place on that date, with a public hearing on the 3rd. The design has been ongoing, but will, has continued, uh, will continue through this month. We're hoping to get SED approval in December, uh, do the bidding again in January, um, and start the construction in April, and we don't panic when we talk about April, uh, we're talking about getting in there maybe when the, the kids are on spring break and, and doing some, uh, work that we can access and, um, and get the ball rolling. Um, and then the project would continue until January of 2021, uh, with, you know, with the work, uh, being completed in a manner that kids can return to school September of '20. And then the project will close out, uh, you know, in that January to March timeframe. Closeout is all the punch list items. So again, the schedule is, uh, a multi-phased approach. Uh, wanna remind everybody, this is probably the first project the North Syracuse Central School District has done where they haven't built some swing space, added on four, six classrooms, and moved kids in. And that's what's prompting us, you know, we wanna, we wanna be careful with our slightly declining population, but not declining enough that we have extra space, uh, we don't need to add more classrooms. And so that's what's prompting us, uh, to put a schedule together where we're gonna move the fourth grade, um, out of the building for the 2021, uh, school year. That's the, that's the schedule. Propositions, uh, you know, a draft, uh, this is asking the voters to approve $9 million and telling them we're gonna use the 2,235, uh, from the fund balance, um, and we're asking, um, uh, the, approve the author issuance of bonds of 6.7 million. And before we move on to the land, can we ask, answer any questions on the, um, Bear Road project?
Yeah, I just, uh, just to clarify, and I, and this maybe is for some of the newer folks, too, so we, we can't go out to bid until the SED approval, correct?
Yeah, that is correct.
So you saw up there, December 2016. We hope to have the approval and then January the bids. What was the gap in 2016? Just at the main, main issue as to why we got into a different market with the construction world?
Yes, that was a portion of it. The State Education Department, and, and I'd have to go back and look, but, um, we were, that, at that time, they were functioning under about a 11-month, 10 to 11-month review time. Did move into the third-party review avenue that they just created around that time, um, but it still was a slow process, um, and so it was a, a multi-month review.
I just think that's important for people to know, and, and we weren't the only ones in that boat. I was at a school boards conference last winter, and there was a Q&amp;A with the commissioner, and several people were hammering on, on just this, there were these huge significant delays, I don't know if anybody had exactly our situation, but, uh, this was all over the state. So, my understanding is we still have this, uh, low unemployment, a dearth of skilled construction trade workers in the climate right now? You, you mentioned that this, you tried to make this attractive to contractors, so...
Yeah, yeah, well, so a couple of...
Could you elaborate on that, I guess?
Sure, yeah, so a couple of, uh, I'll talk, and then I, I don't want, I wanna give Todd an opportunity here. Um, so the, uh, the SED review this time, again, what we showed in the timeline is, is our, uh, our best guess, knowing what we know today. Uh, some things working in your favor, uh, the Office of Facility Planning, um, has committed to giving us a face-to-face review and to expediting the process, um, for this project in particular. So we won't wait in line like time through. So again, they'll still be, they'll still have comments, they'll still be addenda, there's still definitely a process to it, but, um, I think we're gonna see, we're gonna see our, uh, the project move through faster this time, and, and get attention immediately, as soon as it's submitted. Make them aware of it and then move forward. We already reminded them of, uh, their commitment to the district in, in this expedited review. We already reminded them of their commitment to the district in this expedited review, so everyone is aware and waiting for the decision.
Thank you, thank you.
So Paul, you had mentioned that the additions were reduced by half, right?
Yes, approximately. Yeah, I think we, I think we removed about 4,000 square feet and we're down to an addition of, I think, roughly 4,600 square feet, essentially is the kindergarten rooms.
Seems like the amount of this new proposal is almost as much as what the bids came in before.
It's, it is certainly less, but again, I don't know if you want to talk to how you build your estimate.
Yeah, so part of that is based on market conditions and the construction market for this year is actually projected to be very similar, have more work. Talk about how do you make the project attractive to a certain degree. With the redesign, the King &amp; King has done, they've sort of simplified the construction process, makes it much more appealing to certain contractors because when the market is flooded with work, they pick and choose which ones are profitable to them and which ones are the easiest to accomplish with the labor force that's available. So by changing that design and meeting those market conditions, it does make it more favorable for the district to bid at per se. The other thing that we learned last year is that as much as we stay in contact with the prime contractors that are bidding the work, most of the numbers that we received really were side of things. And it's all driven by their subcontractors. So although we listen to the GCs, we've started to reach out direct to subcontractors to make sure we understand what their challenges are, what their labor force looks like, and what makes them profitable and efficient. And we include that or feed that back to King &amp; King as well in the design and throughout the whole bid process.
Thank you for that. So our biggest challenge here is getting competitive bids in there because the last bid was. And I want to, you know, thank you for your presentation. It included a lot of the things that I would have asked questions on, so I appreciate.
Yeah, Paul, I got one. Would you bring up the picture, the color picture with the new state plan?
Yeah, I don't need to have you out loud enough, but that's all right.
Here.
Okay.
Okay. So if you have a handicap person coming into the building, how far will they be going from the parking lot to the new entrance, ballpark?
Entrance would be closer to the parking lot than it is now. And again, this was, this was an easy slide for us to grab. It's actually a pretty old schematic design slide. We have a full layout of that parking lot and we have the handicap spaces.
So they will still come?
We always keep them as close to the building as we can, but they're still going to be in the, you can sort of see where all the cars are parked in the parking lot. So it will be as close to that sidewalk and that curb cut as we can get them, but it's still not going to be directly along the curb where the buses line up now. We want to keep that curb open.
So that's one of the things I hear a lot about people, it's a long walk to get into that building.
The distance, sure.
Is it possible where the buses are to move the gate further down a little bit so they still have the play area, but say the top three buses areas where it's parked right in front of the entry, put handicap park in there?
The only thing that gets difficult is the, right, mixing the traffic. And then the other thing is the buses, surprisingly, to loop around and get back out of there, they need that whole big pit. Just continue to push that down closer and closer to the wetland, which concerns us.
No, it'd still be there just like it is. That wouldn't change any.
Saying just during the day?
When the buses aren't there, yeah, when the buses aren't there.
We can certainly look at it and we can go back. Again, we have more detailed site plans now that we can go back and look at that distance. I think the key thing here, it's much closer than what it was. If you were, so the original addition. Now you're entering the building here, so definitely reduced it, but we don't mind taking a second look.
That's just a concern I've heard a few, quite a few times, the distance for handicap. Yeah. Yeah. If we have a chance to fix it here, at least, if we could do that, it'd be great.
You were talking about only during, when the buses are not running in and out of there.
When the buses aren't there, correct.
So just having?
Yeah, have signs there where they could go there and get some closer.
Yeah, we can certainly look at it. If there's a way to get the gate, we just still want to make sure that we certainly have people driving further into the site.
Even between certain hours, you know?
One key thing from a building security, have everyone enter side of the building. This entrance really is only for picking up and dropping off. What it does for you on this side is, these are the windows where the office has view of the site, can manage the site as a whole. Really does get you back down to that single point of entry, which I think if we can find a way to make sure that the parking is as close to this side as possible. Office trying to buzz people in. Doesn't mean it can't be done, but.
Yeah, I have a few comments. Oh, you just, I was looking at the site plan. So let's talk about the busing. Is this basically the same as we have? I, between buses coming in?
Yeah, same in concept, very different in actual.
The bus. Previously, I talked to Dr. Melv. It was an accident ready to happen. Parents dropping off kids and the buses coming. And thank God for our, of it. So I'm glad. Comments? I was a teacher there in 1983. 30 years ago. This building has deteriorated. Basically, nothing was done to the building. Very, for the school, for the teachers, for the students, for the parents. I can't, for our new M and O person, I can't say enough for, they've held this building This is our largest enrollment school for elementary. I came aboard on the board when Smith Road was done. We can't say enough about what King &amp; King did. Lot of money, Dan will tell you, on energy over there, the whole building. Oh, you're going to do the same job. Or a member, or coming back as a board member to see this. Thank the finance people.
Well, about, I guess it's been a couple of months ago now, I got a phone call from our executive principal at the high school that they noticed a for-sale sign on a parking lot next to the, next to the school. And why don't we go one more slide and I'll just orient. So there's an aerial view of the school and circled in red is the, is the parking lot in question. So it's contiguous land to our district and, so we got the call and we immediately commenced discussions with the owners about whether they would be interested in negotiating a price with us, a lower price. And they were asking $295,000. And let's go back to that previous slide. So it's a two-and-a-half acre piece of vacant land, contiguous to the high school. They were asking $295,000 and they're willing to accept $195,000. As everybody knows, anybody that's been up to the high school when we've run a big event or frankly, just on a, on a regular day, we've got a traffic problem up there. Things like when we run Special Olympics and the New York State Track Meeting, Festival of the Arts and other large events, there's just not adequate parking. The other, the other issue we had, we've had situations where it's, the campus is so crowded that emergency entrance and exiting of the, of the campus has been challenging. And so one thought we had was without, to be clear, we have no intention, at least, we're not asking the board, we weren't intending on asking the public to put a lot of money into this, into this site. We would attempt to create a driveway that would allow a drive-through gate for emergency use. That might allow an ambulance to get on the campus or evacuation of the campus into the Aldis parking lot or exiting out to Route 31 on New Country Drive. So it has some, it has some real advantages. We certainly are, you know, the logical buyer of the lot. And some might ask, well, how are we going to pay for it? Our thought is to pay for it out of the general fund. And so we wanted to, you know, ask the board, we'll be asking you on the 17th to approve the following referendum. If you slip down, oh, you'll see one, keep going down one more. So we're asking to approve the purchase of the two-and-a-half acres for $195,000 and it would be used for supporting all school activities. We would again, not be asking for money to improve this, the lot. It would be used substantially in its current condition. And we have a couple of other slides here. You can back up if you, whoops, go back up. That's the tax map, again, showing the proximity and one more up, again, is the aerial that I showed you earlier. Questions on the land purchase?
I just want to say that to me, the number one reason why we should do this is to create an emergency exit. You know, I, you know, wasn't thinking this was something we could do at this time because of everything else that's going on, but if that was our main focus, to create an emergency exit, I would be in favor of it.
Other thoughts or comments? So I think what offer, working with our attorneys, we've got an environmental review. Property's fine. We don't anticipate any problems. We don't believe it's ever been developed. Questions or comments? So I just want to make one, we have a large group here. We are very fortunate, as Bob said, to have King &amp; King help us with the designs, watchdog on construction management, their expertise, not only in planning a project, but they've managed the, the construction management of the roof projects that have been going on this summer. Fiscal advisors, you know, school finance is a complicated business and we are rigorally on the phone with folks like Mike Schuster and John Chahati, trying to understand the implications of large projects like this, what the impact would be on the taxpayers and how we might finance them. So we're lucky to have the team and Matt Irwin is jumping in right at the right time here at the beginning of this project, so I'm very optimistic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, under comments from the audience, we have no one signed up, so we'll go to Board of Education Committee reports. Do we have any reports?
Yes, our next policy meeting is Tuesday, 10:15 at 5 o'clock. Connie sent out the agenda today.
Crabtree?
Yes, the Legislative Committee will have their first meeting on the 23rd October at 5 o'clock. And this referendum will be one of the things on the agenda. Looking forward to the board members that have signed up for this great committee. We have students on it, teachers and so forth, so first meeting's the 23rd.
Continued comments?
Thank you, Paul. I just want to say congratulations to the football team on an impressive win on Friday against West Jenny. But I do want to thank the swim team in their victory at West Jenny, a 99-76 win. And it was teacher appreciation night and I was also receiving carnations and a T-shirt at Teacher Appreciation. So again, thank you for a wonderful night at the swim meet at Lemoine. I do want to comment on the JV varsity, JV girls tennis team because I had the opportunity to get out to behind the junior high, brand-new tennis courts that are absolutely outstanding. And I got to see their last home meet, but I did speak to a parent of the opposing team and he was very impressed. So I want to say thank you to the team that worked on it and they're very impressive. And the last comment I have is, last week, we had our first PAC meeting, Parent Advisory Committee, and the room was filled and there was a great discussion. Mr. Crabtree was present and looking forward to more meetings with the parents who are definitely interested in being involved in their children's education.
Okay, any other Board of Education comments? Yes, Mr. Crabtree?
Oh, me and Bosse's. Just a reminder, thank you Connie for sending each of the board members a packet of the referendum, which will be on November 19th, four locations for you to vote on purchasing property and building at Crown Road. And it's going to save this district some money, so I'm hoping you do that. One thing that did come up during the Parent Advisors Committee is, I don't believe we have a link to, we may and I'm not familiar with it, to OC and Bosse's. It would be nice if there's a link from our website to go to OC and Bosse's since we have, oh, I think about 400 students that attend special needs kids or additive or CT students. The other item is, and I know some board members, I talked to them the other night about it, is that there will be a visitation of Bosse's on November 7th, so Thursday. It's going to begin at 9:00 a.m. at Crown Road, so you'll see the facility that's up for a vote. You'll get to walk through and see some of the special needs classes. And then we'll probably carpool after that to go to Thompson Road to see our Innovation Tech Program, our STARS Program. And what I like about that is Dan is coming and you will get to sit down and talk for maybe five or 10 minutes with some North Syracuse students that attend our program and why do they attend that program. And we will have lunch at about 11 o'clock, served by the students in the culinary, and then finish up about 11:30 to go through the welding programs and so forth. So if you're interested, please let Connie know so that I can give a number of how many people are coming so we're prepared for lunch. That's November 7th, Thursday, from 9:00 to about noon. Thank you.
You. Under routine action items, if I could get a motion to put the minutes A in front of us?
Just want to mention last, no, that's okay. Last Thursday, Paul, myself, Mary, Mark, and Bob attended the Anadagga Madison School Boards Association Annual Meeting. It was Charlie's last meeting as the director of that organization, so it was kind of a nice send-off for him and all of his advocacy for our local school districts. Just a great evening. Bob put on a great show about what to not do at school board meetings, so we thank you for that. But just a good event to
I do right.
To connect with all of our local school districts and ask what's going on, so.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I was hoping Bob would wear that tie tonight. Okay, if I could get a motion under routine action items for A, put the minutes in front of us? Carried, seconded by George. Any question about the minutes? Done, all in favor? Opposed? Carried. For, if I get a motion for B, C, and D, B is consideration of classification of school placement for disabled students. C is consideration classification of preschool disabled, and D is consideration students in home instruction. If I could get a motion to take B, C, and D? Mark, seconded by Mary. Any qu? Favor? Opposed? Motion carried. E, acknowledgement of business reports 2019. If I get a motion up ahead before us? Motion by Bob, seconded by Mike. Questions on the business office report? Done, all in favor? None, all in favor? Motion carried. Discussion acting, action items, excuse me, I'd like to have a. In front of us? Adoption of the 2019-20 budget process timeline.
So our subcommittee, we're going to continue with that, right?
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
B, acknowledgement of appointment of an impartial hearing officer. And C, the recommendation of proof is resolution regarding a particular student. If I could have a motion, take B and C. George, seconded by Terry, any? Like to take. E. F together, please. D is recommendation, create a, one full-time equivalent licensed practical nurse at Roxborough. E is to abolish. Equipment operators and to create. Two. And F is a recommendation to create and abolish at 1.9. Those are before us, any questions that are?
You, you may remember that with some of our, our, our bigger-ticket positions that have a lot of responsibilities that require a lot of cross-training, we will often create the same position in advance of the departure of the sitting person, creating two positions for a period of time, allowing for cross-training full-time. Then upon the retirement of the person who's on their way out of the position, we then abolish it behind. In this particular position, it oversees some pretty important and pretty systematic pieces, including our entire APPR system and all the professional development for all staff through My Learning Plan. Those are some pretty big programs with a lot of responsibility, and we're in the instructor's unit, we came up with a transition plan.
Okay, we have D, E, and F before us, all in favor? Posed, D, E, and F are carried. Acknowledgment of gifts, we have a list of gifts here. That's for the North. Before us, motion, Terry, by Mary, any questions? Favor? Posed, carried. Can I get a motion for H, acknowledgement of 2019-20 textbook list? By Terry, any questions? Favor? Posed. And surplus of marketable and non-markable equipment, you have a list of marketable equipment today on. Done, all in favor? Posed, carried. I could get a motion to take instructional personnel report, F personnel report and administrative. Up, seconded by Terry. We have A, B, C in front of us, do we have?
So instructional A, there's some point two, point one positions that we're filling in with retirees, and I appreciate that retirees are coming. Fill those positions, not a full-time position. Are there rules in place where a retiree can?
They're, they're certified, so there's no, no issues with that piece, but there are some restrictions on total income that can be had, so if the person is.
Hours or?
Under 60, it's not about hours, it's about dollars. So if they're under 65 years of age, there's a $30,000 earning cap without impacting their retirement, which is essentially like coming out of retirement if you're going to make more money than that. And so we, we, we can get waivers for people through the state if we have to fill a position. So there are some options there.
Not a full position, how are we going to fill it?
Yeah, I agree with you, we greatly appreciate that our retirees come back to help out.
All in favor of A, B, and C? Posed, that motion is carried. At this time, the board will. Session, I'm going to make a motion. Moving to executive session for the purpose of receiving an update on five legal matters relative to potential litigation. To receive an update on negotiations, negotiations with the North Syracuse Education Association and to review the employment history of three individuals with no action to follow. Can I get a second on that? Second. Session. Favor? Motion to adjourn, please. Terry, seconded by George, any discussion on adjournment? All in favor? Posed, meeting's adjourned, thank you.